Regular meeting of the Argus Town Council.
Make motion to open the regular session of June 19th, 2019, Argus Town Council.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to open the meeting. All fair and secure. Do I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Roll call.
Fellas Randy Snead.
Dylan Culver.
Suzanne Alba.
George Knoll.
Sean Arlo.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Norrany.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens input. Jane.
Oh, yes.
Front row, citizens input.
We were doing some plans for the next TGIF. We're working.
Okay.
As we gave you a sheet, we want to thank, we have so many people to thank for making TGIF work. And it started with the Bourbon Food Truck Friday because I went there and found other organizers and they were so willing to share information and it was really thrilling because I think this is our first introduction to a lot of vendors. So, we kind of made the list here and I certainly hope we haven't forgotten anybody. And of course, the council approve are doing this just on, I guess, the word. And then, a big thank to Jamie and his crew because he just wanted to work on Candle Power. I just wanted to. They did a great job and I got to watch it all unfold outside my office and so I have a new tree outside my office and it works great for this. Just doesn't have leaves on it yet. And Doug and Doug Middleton, Mark Vanderburg helped us with the water for our vendors. The fire departments and EMTs are very instrumental in getting us block each of under the stoplight and they participated and that was very important. Another really important feature was Amerikan donated restroom facilities and that probably was one of the most important vendors that came along and they did, they were very willing to donate and I believe they're going to for the other three events also. And the AC/DC committee did donate a thousand dollars and that paid for, is paying for the music entertainment that we're having in the fire thriller. The Friends group then is paying for the children's programming. This time we'll have a balloon twister. And we're going to have a magic bag and some face painting on some other bands. Oh, and we're looking at a bouncy house. And then Perry Martin, Jamie Curry, they helped us a lot with marketing and advertising. Our vendors are very important. We had a really good group. Our setup is a little easier than Bourbon's because our street's so much wider. And, I don't know, the town has helped us get us people in and out as far as getting some traffic directed so we didn't hang out. A few people didn't read the directions but that's okay. We got them where they needed to go and it really worked quite well. But the community gave us really good support and amongst the weather did too. So, we want to thank everybody who was involved and we hope, the next one is July 12th. It is the Friday evening before the fair starts on the 13th, so it gives us a little bit of different setup, so we're going to still go forward. So, we hope you can come and we thank you for all your help.
Jane, I'd like to thank both of you and Val for all the work you put into this. I thought it was great.
We're trying to fine tune some things and find a place to sit down. We've also talked about maybe seeing if the Boy Scouts or someone would like to do Zed Collars right at six o'clock. We could do any, just a five-minute opening ceremony. There won't be a lot there, but at least it would be, I thought it was kind of neat. It was Flag Day when we had this, but they didn't want to leave the flags out late into the night, but it's kind of a nice thing to, so we're working on that. Thank you. But if you have suggestions, you know where to find us.
I have to say, I was very impressed by, for the very first one the town's ever tried to put on and the amount of work that you guys put into it, I was relieved and happy at the same time that there was so much turnout there. I was just, when I walked downtown, I was like, wow, this is really great. So, that was good.
I would say at six thirty, I was disappointed because I was afraid we weren't going to get a crowd, but I keep forgetting how much wider our street is. We hold a lot more people. And my husband's saying, you are missing that they are, they are here.
Yeah. I was, I was very happy to see the turnout. It was really good.
The nice thing was the food vendors were telling us that they sold out. Most of them by nine o'clock had, other than elephant ears and pretzels and a couple of things, there was no food. The girls that were selling the saucer. They sold, I mean, just unbelievable. How many sold out?
Yeah, by the time I'd been in my rounds, everybody was out of what I wanted to eat.
Everybody's wait was about an hour long. We'd have to cross the street and then by the time I'd decided, okay, it's short enough, I'll wait. They were out of food.
The other good point that happened was that if you walked by the Bourbon Pizza, they had people in there eating. On a Friday night, I go in there regularly for carryout and to know that there was business in the downtown and people didn't want all that food truck stuff. They might, they wanted to go sit down and they gave them some business.
I did talk to Justin, but I sent somebody down there and they told me that he is normally pretty well packed on a Friday night. He was still pretty well packed on a Friday night. He went down and got salmon, so it didn't hurt him. It actually, I think it helped our downtown. I think everybody.
That's what Bourbon said. Bourbon said that they're downtown benefited a lot from that.
Well, you've done a great job of getting everybody to their little numbered space. That was quite a job. Everybody there. We didn't have to move anybody. Things worked out really good.
That's the teacher, man.
That's what it is. She's used to telling people where to go.
That's right.
Kids go there, there, there. Yeah, she's done a good job.
Anyone else have any citizens input? Mark.
Yeah.
You want to go, Mark?
No.
This is on the comprehensive plan. When we look at our short-term goals and activities we need to do, there's 26 of them. Town council is responsible for 16, redevelopment for seven. Long-term strategies, there's 35, town council's 14, redevelopment's nine. I think the council needs to spend some time on developing some kind of self-accountability to make sure that this comprehensive plan is worked because it's, I think unless you take a very proactive approach toward this thing, it's easy not to address a lot of things. A lot of things in this plan that should have been addressed by now are not addressed. I sit back and I just watch, there's always a lot of talking going on, but there's no executing. And it's beginning to get really frustrating. So, I, you know, that's just the one thing I wanted to bring out. There's a lot of citizens' input in this comprehensive plan. It's, I think it's a terrific plan, but it needs to be worked. And if, if we don't focus on this, we're not going to work on it. And if you think about it, so far this year, we look at the council meetings and this is never addressed. Redevelopment has a tough time getting a quorum. And I just think this is, this needs to be a focus. We're, this town is at a pinnacle right now. Got a lot of stuff going on. We're going to go one or two ways. We're going to go up, we're going to go down, but we're not going to stay the same. People are going to get frustrated if we keep talking about the things we're going to do and then we just don't get them done. So, I just thought that maybe the council could work out some kind of a schedule or something where they just make sure that they get into this comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, minutes of the 6:05 regular session.
I need to approve the minutes for 6:05 of 19.
Second.
Go on, Jake.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Now, all fair and secure. Do I say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Attorney report. We get citizens input. We're ahead of ourselves.
Guys, I really don't have much to report other than just to remind you that I will not be here at the next meeting on July the 3rd. But I don't have any new news, new developments. It's good. It's not bad.
That's good.
Enjoy your vacation. Thank you.
Well, on that note, I won't be here either, July the 3rd.
Where are we going, Eric?
One fish if you want to go.
All right, well, I guess we don't have attorney's report to accept, so good. Anybody got any old business, I'm sure?
Just be where I bring up, bylaws. Should I just wait for my department head again?
Wait, your department head again.
Never know when to bring this up.
Any new business? Or old business, I should say?
I don't know what to say on this. I guess the big thing is our EMS, we're going to have to start, we're going to have to make some decisions in here almost immediately. I don't know. I can give my opinion and that's all it is, is an opinion, but I think sir, it'd be a thing to us to hire a couple, maybe full-time EMTs or something. I think at least for the first year, we're going to have to maybe kind of bite the bullet and do this because if we don't, we're going to be hurting it. I'm looking at it, not just the loss of revenue from the town, but us not being able to answer all the calls, but also by some of the liability. And our people in this town deserve to have ambulance service. They deserve to have good, somebody good to give them good care and everything when they're needing this and we're going to have to do something about it. I don't know if we need to go into a workshop or what we need to do, but something has got to be done and be done soon. We can't drag this out. It's been, the next six to eight months is probably about the end of time frame where we need to get it done.
Sarah, were you able to get any interest at TGIF?
Someone said they might be interested in going through the course if they had time. That was the interest that I got from it. It takes, it just, it takes a lot of, like I said, it really does. Like every two years, we have to attend 34 hours of continuing education and for a volunteer, you know, it's, it's tough. You don't want, you know what I mean? Yeah, I don't know how to explain that without it sounding bad because people, younger people just don't understand, even the older generation. Some of them, they're like, eh, someone else will get it, you know what I mean? So, it's everyone currently saying, someone else will do it and not wanting to put in that time and effort for very minimal. I mean.
The old saying is, the volunteer didn't do it, won't get salary.
Yeah. But unfortunately, everybody's saying, someone else will do it. Thank you.
We've got good equipment and we've got some good people, but they just need a little push maybe to, to put forth a little more effort. I don't know. We're getting ourselves caught between the rock and the hard place. We're going to have to make a grand decision on this. Kind of let it go long enough without doing anything. I can't, I can't see within a year of us doing anything other than maybe hiring somebody because we're not ready. I don't think private enterprises will even be interested in us, but we don't have enough calls, but I just can't, we're not ready for that. And we can't just sit here and say, well, someday we'll get ready. We can't. So, we've got to do something.
I can do some more research as far as money, like what it would go into versus saving versus things like that over the next week or so. I can look into it more. I know you guys want more solid factual money creation. I get it. I do. I really do. But at the same time, it does come down to your community and what can we provide for them.
I would prefer to take this into a workshop with Sarah where we can throw all this out on the table and focus just on that. And, you know, I agree, it's a dire situation. We've got to figure something out. But I think that's something we need to kind of weigh in a workshop where we can work on that with Sarah. She can do some additional research on some things to help us or guide us and so forth.
George here, you called workshop.
That would be my, that would be my preference.
If you want me there, it's not going to happen till after July 12th.
After what?
After July the 12th.
There may be plenty of time to do more research, so.
Because I'm, oh, but that doesn't mean I have to be there. You know? So, I guess maybe you guys decide you want to call it workshop before I'm gone, you know, I guess you can do it.
Yeah.
You're in charge when I'm gone.
Right.
You're still in charge. So, if you guys want to get together before that, but I, I won't be around until.
Does anybody have any?
Dates?
Calendar here.
Closer to the end of the month there is better for me, to be honest with you, or early July. I know George will be gone, but that just works better for me. I'm not saying that.
Okay, we, our meetings are the 3rd and the 17th.
George, do you have any?
I won't be here, I won't be back till after the 4th of July.
Well.
Will you be here next year?
Yes. Till Thursday. The week before the 17th is fine with me. If I have any time here, I can make it work. I can juggle a few things.
Dylan, what, I don't know. I'm good. You're good. I just, I start school next week and then I just have work during the day, so.
Okay, so you've got meetings from New York. Suzanne?
July gets tight. My son from Australia is flying in. We're having a party for anniversary.
The week of the 15th, Monday the 15th, do you have any days open that week?
That week, that's a jolly. 15, 16, and 17.
Does anyone object to the 26th of this month, next Wednesday?
That works.
Let's do it. 26th? Yeah.
Actually, those days.
Sean?
I think I can probably make that work. I'm hoping.
All right, so let's, let's schedule a workshop then for the 26th about, I don't know, 7?
That would be better for me anyway. Later, better.
Suzanne, 7, all right. You, Dylan, 7?
I'd be here for that one.
Lisa, 7? Okay.
That won't work. I'm just kidding.
You'll be on duty one hour.
One week from tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
All right, anybody else got any old business? Does remember the festivals this weekend, everyone? Turn the light on me. Show up. It'll be great. We'll do the raindrops. Got a lot of people working on this one too.
The town has a table, but I'm not going to be the one manning it the whole time. If anybody wants to help. And also, we need a sign that says Argus, Town of Argus, if they have anything to put so that we can identify ourselves.
Take that with you.
There, right there.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. I'll take one of those. I can help you, or I can help. So, let me know what hours you need covered.
Part of Saturday, I'll be doing stellar, so I'm not going to be able to do town all the time.
Okay. Well, just let, you're visiting, let me know what hours you're thinking about.
They're calling for rain Saturday. They're saying 70%, but now they're even saying it may be in the morning. American Legion is having a car show. We're having a car show. We're going to go forward with it as far as we can and hope it doesn't get rained out. So, everything's kind of on go for that. If you know anybody that's got a car that they would like to bring, we're not really judging. We're going to give some prizes. Everybody will get some kind of a gas card or discount, or some kind of coupon, something for just showing up and then we are going to try to find the oldest and give them something. We've got some other little things, so come in, look at your old cars Saturday.
Hey, wine's club's having a free birthday on Saturday, 1:00, 7 to 9, so don't forget. Come on down, eat.
Have it over here?
Yeah, back there.
Back here, your building?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to ask.
So, the wine up to Friday evening?
What we got?
I have a legs pancakes and sausage.
And Mark does the cooking.
Just the sauce.
It's always good.
Their old business? Anybody got any new business? It's the drainage on Cherry Street. That surprised me when you guys brought that up because I lived down there for years and I've never seen that before.
Sunday, there was a post put up on Facebook that I got off pretty quickly that was posted. And I'm not going to go into the details of that, but it got pretty carried away and bless her heart, she took the post down after a while. But anyway, there is a major problem down there. I do have pictures. It was taken Sunday morning, several hours after the storm. You can pass those down. I've looked at all of them. Made notes on one of them.
I was down for pictures also because I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah, so I did, Monday, I did reach out to Ms. Simpson, or Mrs. Simpson, lives on the corner here where this driveway is at. And she relates to me, she was very pleased that I reached out to her. She says it's been an ongoing problem down there. They're getting tired of it. They feel like the town doesn't care about them over on that side of town. And I assure her that's not the truth, that some of us weren't even aware that this was happening. And so then Monday, on the way home from work, I stopped and talked to Peggy, who lives on the corner there, Johnson. And she lives on the corner just down the road from that of pictures. They're right on the corner. And she, I asked her what her thoughts were on that. She said, yes, it's terrible. The drains don't work. She said she's even had water up in her garage. No, this would be her garage here. She's had water up in her garage. These people, they get water in theirs all the time. So, I guess, and I know there's some conversations. I know Jamie's had some thoughts and this and that and the other, but it sounds like we may need to try to figure out a better solution for what's going on down there. Jamie, any ideas?
Well, there's no drainage on that side of town. On the, on that side of the tracks, there's drywells. So, I'll have to look into it. I heard just a little bit about it, but I'll have to look into it. I got some ideas, but we'll see.
Unfortunately, it's been a problem. It's the first we've heard of it. So, it must not have been a very good problem lately, in my opinion, so.
Is it the road that comes right into Apple? Is that where it's at? I haven't seen those pictures.
Well, in that, we're, yeah, it's Cherry Street. We're right there.
It's north and south.
Right there at Apple. Peggy even told me it floods right down there, right, right at Grove Street too. It floods right there.
That's Saint Grove completely flooded over.
You talking about Fremont?
Fremont, yeah.
I've never seen Cherry.
Yeah, I haven't seen Cherry flood either up there.
Cherry up and Fremont, yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, you know, when it gets bad, we'll pump it out and stuff, but there's just no drainage. And for us to tie in over here, my thinking is we're just going to create problems for somebody over here because this system can't handle any more water. So, I'll look into it. I'll see what I can find out.
I'd appreciate, I guess, if you would look into it because I think these people deserve to have better drainage than that. I mean, they're getting water in their garages if I'm crying out loud.
Yeah.
I just mean, I think it needs, we need to try to figure out something.
Well, and what we didn't, West Dukor, when it rained like that, we'd go pump the water out with the vac on. So, now, now that we know that, we can keep an eye on it and if that's what we got to do, we will. But I haven't got any complaints. It's the first I've heard of it, so.
Well, I, like I said, I happened to cross it on Facebook Sunday at 12:00 and so then I reached out to these residents and tried to get more information. And that's what I found out. They, they would like to have some kind of a solution.
Okay. Okay, Fair Board is asking to have a porta pit on the Friday, July 12th, the same as the TGIF thing. It would be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM and they would like to do it out there in a parking lot. They did it last year, but it was on a Saturday, so it didn't interfere with any of the business. And of course, the guy's going to be here before 4:00 obviously, like 1:00 set up. How is that going to feed your business in this building at 1:00?
Is that Friday?
Mm-hmm. It's a Friday, July the 12th.
See, I think last time they had it on a weekend.
They had it on a Saturday.
Yeah.
This, this year, they want it on a Friday and then you're setting up at 1:00 PM.
The whole fair's been moved back a day. Every event's been pushed back, so I don't know anything other than what you read in that email, but I'm confident that's the reason for changing the dates.
And the reason they like it here is because of the exposure.
And that's why last year when they came and asked us, we didn't have any problems with that because, yeah, that's great exposure, but that's a working day.
It's going to be the same day.
The second Friday.
And we're going to have to have work trucks coming, you know what I mean?
It was a busy day, so it's going to be a busy day again.
And it's also the Friday before bills are due.
Yeah, that's crazy.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm all for helping the fair out, so if you decide to do it, that's fine. Just be prepared for the amount of serpents we're going to get.
Alternate location around here, we could set them up possibly instead of frightening.
That's what I was just.
It might be.
They used to go back the lane that, nobody could see them. Nobody knew they were there.
Have them set up where the gravel lot.
Well, you know what?
For the libraries, that.
Why can't we do that? Prove them down there.
That's an excellent idea.
Because that's still right? They can be right at, on the street? They can have the visible.
They come through the back alley behind the station and pick it up and leave if they want to.
What's the time frame?
Uh, 4:00 to 7:00. And I know TGIF Fridays at 4:00 or 6:00.
Yeah.
That might bring in more people.
Yeah, you don't know. See, you don't know. That, that's the thing. We, you don't know what.
If we move them up there, then they're closer to the TGIF too.
Some of the, some of the vendors that were non-food, I talked to some, some of them made some pretty good money. Some didn't do any good, but some did. So, you know, you don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
I'd say move them down.
Yeah, I agree.
And a lot of, I mean, if they want someplace to set up, I'd do that because of the fact, like you said, it's.
Right.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can flip them out here with that.
Not here, not here. A lot of the work's handled, please, so. Get that to Dale.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm sure. Am I going to make that?
Okay, I make a motion to allow the fire, the fire board to set up their chicken down at the old library parking, the gravel lot. Second.
Your motion is second. Is there any other discussion? Not all fair. Six to five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anybody else got any new business? Department head reports. PD.
I've only got a couple of things. First, I apologize for getting my report out late. Usually have it out a lot earlier, but didn't get back.
Usually have it out a lot earlier, but didn't get it back.
As on occasion.
Um, and the only really other thing, everything's going pretty good, the P D. One other thing I had, I kinda told you a fib, I guess, wasn't my fault. I told you last time I was having a meeting that Rodney was gonna have surgery. Apparently he's not gonna have surgery, got his second opinion and he's gonna try to stick it out with a cortisone, cortisone shot. So see how long he go with that and go from there. Might have to have surgery here, I don't know. But. He has a feminine need.
I got any other questions for Cory?
I'll maybe give somebody a ticket. A lot?
Ticket for a dog running loose.
I gave ten code tickets last month.
I'll say you've been doing a good job on code, Cory. I've been watching the months and follow, seeing how you follow up, but you're doing a good job.
Keep in mind, this month's gonna be a little bit different because I've been, the other day was the first I came back this month. I was off for two weeks, so. Then we got the fair and trying to catch up with everything.
They just came a long ways. Got a good job.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Um, everything's going pretty good for us too. We're finally getting caught up with some things. Getting the mowing caught up and, and all that. But Pavey going on right now, I don't know if you've seen Woodland Trail, they've got that all tore out today. They got it stoned. Sounds like next week they might be out of here as far as E and B with Woodland, Woodland and West U Court. So they poured curbs in West U Court last couple of days, we had a couple repairs to do. Uh, they're probably gonna be tearing that out tomorrow, Friday, maybe even Monday, I don't know how long this can take them. But once they get that out, they'll, they'll be right in behind Pavey, and so it's gonna go pretty quick. Colonial States looks like Monday they'll start out there. That's gonna be a little lengthier project, I think they said about seven weeks to complete, complete that, so. Just a few things. I'm still gonna add, we'll probably be doing interviews next week, try to find somebody. And I, I don't know if you drove around much, but the park, guy's been doing a really good job out there keeping up with the mowing. Looks really good, especially for this weekend, so. But if you see anything that needs done, let me know. If you see something we missed, but I got plenty of guys just going every direction and we're trying to clean up, so.
Did you have a chance to go by Roost on North Street, check out that tree?
I did. And I, I told him, you know, we don't cut those trees down for secondary, that's all that's in there secondary, so. You know, we'll, we'll do some light trimming, but we, we usually don't take full trees down for that. And I, I know it's dead, but you know, it's just, we don't get into that. We wouldn't be cutting trees everywhere. We got enough to trim them to do around the power lines, so.
Okay. Anything else for Jamie? Again, thank you for the whole crew, for the downtown TGIF, I thought there was a lot of time spent there.
We spent some time there.
Yeah, he, he couldn't even, there was, he had to work late even at night. There was, you know, just problems and, you know, one thing, you call Jamie and he's there, you don't have to worry. And, and really, the guys, everybody, I've watched them and they've been just doing a great job. Some's working here, some's working over there, uh, different ones doing different things. And they've, they've been busy, they've really been busy.
Fire department? Suzanne?
I guess I don't have a report here.
Um, Mark came to me yesterday and said that their computer was not letting him log in. Well, he actually came to me today and so I, I had thought going to his computer and re-activate his Excel and Microsoft. So he apologizes, but he will get your report and this won't be today, so.
They don't have a report to hand out now. But they do have four new people coming on. They were there the other night, they'll start class in August. So they are increasing the numbers and that's what they wanted to do. They're looking ahead.
We're trying to push them both.
Everybody wants to be a fireman, that's cool.
It's the bright red truck.
We can make that one's his red.
Okay, Sarah, I guess you're on. Thank you very much.
So my council report, you guys have my report. I did find an error, I apologize. The total call types for the year to date is seventy-one, not sixty-one. But other than that, everything else is accurate. Stretcher came in and it's installed. Um, those of you that stopped down at the TGIF and got to see it, um, it works phenomenally. It's, we actually had to use it Friday night, so it's great on gravel, which is great news. The other ones were quite choppy and, um, we are still looking for E and Ts obviously. Last night at our meeting, well, we had a great fire training meeting, a joint meet, um, training on Monday night. Um, but then last night, all of the driver, the drivers and E and Ts that were there last night, they were all trained on the new, out on the cot, so that's great. It's all ready to go into service. And actually, this is new today. Um, next Monday, we're meeting with Brandon Cooper and Dr. Kelly Smith, who will be our medical director. And they're gonna be going over protocols with the E and Ts next Monday evening. So if you wanna be there for that, that would be great. If not, the drivers aren't required to go, it's just the E and Ts.
I'll try.
Okay, so, um, and then also, you guys should have the bylaws. The, the only thing that's different in those than what you had prior was, I'm sorry, let me, you know. Okay, so Article twenty-one. For G and H, they were reworded for clarity. As was saying Article twenty-one, five, D through F. And that includes both types of memberships. And then, um, also Article, where are we? Sorry. Article seven, I defined the differences in Article seven as far as memberships. So it was just to clarify things, nothing drastic changed, but those were the changes that I had submitted to Derek. And he said, you, they looked better and more appropriate wording, so. Um, I guess I was just presenting them to you. You guys can, I mean, if you guys looked over them last time, great, and you can vote them on in. Or if you guys wanna take a look at these fully again, then next month we can vote them in.
Keep in mind, we don't have anything in place at this point. I don't know how long EMS has been around, but it's really amazing that this has never been done.
I know it.
And then when you come to realize that, I don't know, again, how long it's, it's been since EMS has been around, but this has never been done. But now there's at least a draft. Is it perfect? I don't know. I mean, I don't know much about EMS, but at least when you read through it, it makes sense, it's logical. There's only a couple of things that really we talked to Sarah about, or I talked to Sarah about. So I mean, I'm, I'm impressed that, I guess I'm relieved that we'll hopefully have some bylaws here that at least uses a set of guidelines.
Six months and we got this, and how do you say we never had it before?
Right.
Twenty-five cent.
Hmm, twenty-five cent.
Close? I think it looked good, I read the other ones.
Oh, really?
I read, I read the other ones and I'm, I'm like, Randy, I'm impressed and I like them.
I am too, I've read them.
They can always be tweaked or something, it doesn't work.
Or if we find something doesn't work, we can revisit them.
We change ours every year, I think.
I'm gonna make a motion if we pass the EMS volunteer bylaws.
That was the, he's on, I'd like to second that.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the Argus Emergency Medical Service Volunteer Bylaws. Is there any discussion? No, Fair Board, I have a second, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same time. Motion carry. Just sign this one.
Here, you can sign this one. You can leave that one and sign that one. I don't think it's too much of a date, sorry. I think there's a spot for you to write it in.
All right, move on to, well, I guess the motion to accept department head reports.
Make a motion to accept department head reports as submitted.
Second.
Here's the motion, a second to accept department head reports. All the fair's signature, I have a second, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Claims.
The total docket for June nineteenth is one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is payroll number twelve at thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirteen cents. Number two is Federal Reserve at seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Number three is Indiana Department of Revenue Sales Tax at seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Number four is Town of Argus RSA at six thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And number five is the Marshall County E D C at six thousand, two hundred dollars. The total amount of the five claims is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And the top five claims represent sixty-one percent of the total docket. I also have an announcement. Please, please, please clear your schedules for that fair week for budget talks. It'll be the Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday if needed.
Dates.
I believe it is July fifteenth.
Fifteenth is Monday.
Fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. So please, please clear your schedules, we have a lot to go over.
A lot. What time are we gonna start?
Six.
All right.
I moved past, virtual set claims number six fifty-three to through six eighty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion or questions, release it? All, fair's signature, I have a second, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Anything else before we adjourn? Motion adjourn, make a motion to adjourn. A second.
Second.
And a motion in a second to adjourn, all the fair's signature, I have a second, aye? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carry. Thank you, everyone.